It's 6:30 and I'd like to call this meeting the Town of Stockbridge Planning Board to order. Thank you all for coming. We have two sets of minutes to approve. The first one from January 4th, which we decided needed a slight revision. Jennifer sent that out. Are there any comments? Or let me start with, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
January 4th minutes and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments on the January 4th minutes as revised? Hearing none. Jennifer, can you call the roll, please?
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Kate?
Aye.
Okay.
And now the January 18th meeting minutes, also set around by Jennifer. Can I have a motion to approve these?
I move we approve these minutes as sent around.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments on the January 18th minutes?
I'll abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay. Hearing none. Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Kate?
Too late, I'm going to, I will make my comment afterwards.
Gary, you're going to abstain, right?
Yeah, I wasn't here.
So my comment is just to remember, I know it's too late for these two sets of minutes, but just to remember to include at the end the documents that were part of the discussion at the respective meeting.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is the sign application for 44 Main Street. And I'm glad the person's name is on the agenda because trying to decipher his signature would stump the CIA. Is anybody here? Are you here from?
Yeah, he's Zoom, I think he's Zooming maybe?
Yeah.
There he is.
Oh, okay. Is it Steve Kenny or Trent Kenny?
I don't know, but what is Trent?
I'm here on Trent's behalf. He submitted, yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So we have the application. By the way, just to comment, Jennifer, because of the signature, which is illegible, can we amend this form to include the name of the applicant?
Part two?
Yep.
Not just the signature of the applicant?
Maybe he can tell us who signed it?
I assume it was Trent, not Stephen.
Signed by Trent.
Okay. And we have Stockbridge's greatest referee joining us via Zoom. Michael, welcome. Kara's already here. Hopefully, we won't need any jump balls tonight, Michael.
He's dressed in his outfit.
Yeah. So Stephen, would you like to talk about this application?
So we created this sign image of great painting of Stockbridge. It matches the same style. Sign right to it there.
Stephen, you are cutting out. We hear about every third word.
Okay, is this any better?
That's better, I think.
Okay. So we made this sign to combat the sign that's right next to it there, style at least, for Seven Arts. And we made it in the image of what can be seen in the famous Main Street painting for this building. And we're hoping that a similar sign can be approved for the tenants on the other side of the building, which is just now occupied, in the same style that it together looks very similar to what the original painting looked like.
Okay, when, have you moved in?
Yes, we have. We have not opened. We are.
Okay, just curious.
So this sign meets our bylaw. And if you'd like, I can share the relevant section of our bylaw so people can see that.
Go ahead.
Maybe she shouldn't hear you?
I think she's trying.
Oh. Here we go. Okay, keep talking and I'll work on it.
How exciting, a candy store in Stockbridge.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so there it is. And if you look at 6.8.8, permanent signs in the business zoning district. And then if you look at A, and then two I's. It's right there for any non-residential principal use consisting of multiple establishments. One sign not to exceed 16 square feet in area for each separate establishment. Except as otherwise provided in Section 6.8.8A triple I, all such signs shall be attached flat against the wall of the building and no sign shall project over a parapet wall. This sign is under 16 square feet. So my understanding is that it meets the requirements of the bylaw for signs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Bill?
Yes.
Marie?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Okay.
Trent, nice job.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Making nice candies.
I don't know. I don't know who should.
Is that one copy?
Yep.
Okay. So with Michael here and Kara, again Kara, Kara, not Kara.
Kara likes Sarah.
Kara likes Sarah? Okay, Kara, again, welcome. Michael, you look like you're ready to talk about Kara's work in the town. And we'll move to her discussion about, or onto the discussion about ADUs. And if you have, either of you have a view on the presentation that Patrick White made a couple of weeks ago to this body about broadly more affordable housing, we'd welcome those thoughts as well. So whoever wants to start off, please.
I'll start off, Bill. So Kara's been a welcome addition to the town since mid-December when she started. She's done a thorough look at the ADUs, plus she's been looking at parking for the downtown. And as far as what was proposed by Patrick White, I did receive your email and did give a copy to Kara. She'll be examining that and I would recommend that we come back in March to discuss the pros and cons, give her time for that. So I think tonight you should focus on the presentation that Carol gave about what she has done to date on the ADU and then an overview of what she's examining as far as parking in the downtown. Once again, we're keeping all options open and what we'd be looking for are what direction you want us to take after we've presented, so.
Okay.
Kara's ready to go.
Laura's yours.
So it's not much of a formal presentation, a perfect back to the world. Does anyone need a hard copy of anything?
Do you have an extra one? I couldn't print mine out. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Is that that one?
Yeah, that's it. And you've got the slides. Do you need one? I think.
I did, yeah, yeah. Everything, I just wanted to make sure everyone was happy.
Kate, do you have this in front of you?
I do.
The presentation?
Thank you, I've got it.
Okay. You want me to bring my lab pack up here, but I don't think there's many cords, so we'll just go through this. May I take this off, is that okay with you?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yes, my first slide, tie over. Yes, a new yorker, look out. All right, so ADUs. Phil left off, I think, very close to the end product of either amending the use of table, the table of regulations, or the bylaw itself. In front of you, you have a very short presentation by or why not ADUs, the benefits, the drawbacks, and what will really happen. Thank you, Mike. And, or thank you, Kate, can you tell me?
I think it's Kate. She's the screen sharing guru.
It's Mike, it's Mike.
Oh, it's Mike.
Thank you, Mike. This is what we're looking at, world, and if you want to just go to the next slide, there's nothing too good on that title slide. Great, so why not or why ADUs? So I looked at the American Planning Association because I am new and I am learning and they are a wealth of knowledge. So I'm not just going to read, you know, down these benefits, down the one neutral bullet point and down the downfalls column, but does anyone have any questions or anything new that's been raised regarding these points since you've last discussed it? Yes.
Kara, what, the first downfall is not enforceable?
Yes.
Why is it not enforceable? Enforceable?
I discussed with Mike and Ned, we have not found a plausible way to enforce this. We've heard from surrounding municipalities that they are having trouble enforcing it. They are already past the point of adding this or amending it in their bylaw. So they're kind of looking behind their shoulder and thinking, now what? Because people are treating it as an addition, though it's, you know, 900 square feet or whatever the municipality amends their bylaw to be for the square footage of the accessory dwelling unit, it's being treated differently than what it says on paper, which is unfortunate.
And do these other municipalities that already have an ADU bylaw on the books, have they found that there are clear but unenforceable violations of the bylaw already?
Hi, yes, yes, some have. Others are still figuring that out.
Yeah.
You know, it's a residential property, so, you know, Ned doesn't have the permission to just, you know, walk onto your, walk onto your property, Marie, and be like, hi, you know, I want to check and make sure you only have two bedrooms and that it's, you know, they're not going to break measuring tape and.
But wait a minute. He's the building inspector. If we've got a bylaw that says X, Y, and Z, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can only do that, isn't he, I mean, you tell me, fellow members, isn't Ned our enforcer? And hasn't he acted as an enforcer when there are violations of other bylaws?
Yes.
So Phil, if I could interject for a second?
Yeah, please.
So one of the key things that we've been discussing in Town Hall when it comes to bylaws is verifiability and enforcement. So how can you verify what's going on and how can you enforce it? So when you get to a building inspector, zoning inspector, unless there's a violation that we are aware of to allow us to go onto a property, such as a failing septic system might get the board of health on. But in general, when you're talking about a residential home, once the home is built and in use, you just can't go on to somebody's property, knock on the door, and they don't have to let you in. So when you get into commercial buildings and others, they, we typically have inspections that have to happen as part of the building codes that allow us into the building, which allows us to see various violations. This is where you have somebody say they're putting an addition in and it doesn't, it's not going to have a kitchen, and then you leave and then they put in a kitchen without a permit, without anything. But under the building code, no, the building inspector does not just have the right to show up on private property that's for residential use, unless there's something that has triggered us to be on there, like I said, a failing septic system might bring us on or something like that. So that's where these can be difficult.
So Mike, once they have that certificate of occupancy as part of the building process, once they have that in their hands, that's it? Is that?
That's it.
Okay.
So some of the things that we, speaking to Ned, some of the things that he's run into is then the house goes for sale and you go in and you realize they've changed around what they were originally, was supposed to be done, and they did it without permits. And now you have an issue of now it isn't conforming to the zoning and it just can create trouble. So we just want you to be aware that once that certificate is issued, there are many ways that we can get onto a residential property, except when they pull a permit, then they're inviting us in.
Nancy?
So the assessor comes around every couple of years, I forget how many years it is, and they inspect your property. And even if you don't let them in, they can look in the windows and see, you know, I mean, they can't actually see everything that's in there, but we had an issue at our home and it was finally resolved through, you know, because we didn't want them coming in our home if we're not there, because we both work. But he's, the record card showed that we had two living floors and we don't have two living floors. So our, we've been overtaxed for years. But I know, then, right, Gary, every few years, I don't know how many years it is, that they have a right to come in, they send out papers every household to say, we want to come in and inspect your home, see how many bedrooms you have and closets and bathrooms and everything. So there is a way for that way. So maybe the bill, the assessor can report to the building inspector that they have an issue and then you can go in there.
So the assessor has to be very careful on that, they can. The assessor can go in every so many years when we have a revalve and sometimes we use an outside assessing firm or sometimes it's our assessor that's using it.
Yes.
But when you do, you don't have to be let in. We're not allowed to, we're not supposed to be peeking at windows and the rest, but if we're not allowed in, then we're allowed to assess the property as everything is the highest possible standard and there are some tricks that can be used. I am a certified assessor, so I'm aware of how we're supposed to. And during our training classes for being an assessor, one of the things they say is to be very careful about mixing what you're doing. An assessor is not a building inspector. But obviously, if they go in and there's supposed to be one kitchen and there's two, you're going to let them know. But, you know, whether something is or isn't a bedroom or not, yeah, it depends. So we just got to be careful about understanding. And I know Kara was looking, and some communities have affidavits where somebody says, this will only be used as a, you know, for family or whatever, but there's no way for us to go in and verify. So once again, verification and enforcement, you know, you don't, you want to make sure whatever bylaw we're creating, that we're able to hit those two points, to make it as efficient of a bylaw as possible.
Well, who would that, would we say, have to say in the bylaw that, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Would we have to say in the bylaw that the building inspector has the right to go into a home if, say, the next door neighbor said, hey, they're doing a lot of work there?
No. The building inspector can stop and ask questions, but they don't have to let them in. And this is where it gets, you know, it can be, it can be difficult whether or not, you know, because some things you can do yourself in your home and you could be, hey, I got some wood here, yeah, building some shelves for my whatever. So, you know, or I'm building toys or who knows what. I mean, you can make up any excuse. Your neighbor calling, no, if your neighbor's just calling, it's going to have to be something that is, like I said, verifiable. So if Ned drives by and there's a construction company there and they've got the wall removed, okay, where's the building permit? But, you know, a lot of times, these are not very obvious and these are little things like there's not supposed to be a kitchen and then they, they go on, they'll, I've actually seen it where they designed the house and there's a space in the cabinet and you look there and go, what's going there? And they go, nothing. You know they're already cutting it out for a stove and they're just going to go buy a stove and they don't need to put any construction in. But, yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've kind of known for years at Planning Board that that's going down. One question I have, Kara, under neutral, may change the appearance of the neighborhoods. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. So in addition to just a little more parking, you know, having, having more noise and perhaps more light, in addition to probably, you know, the foot traffic and the physical appearance of neighborhoods, yes, it may, you know, look just like a garage and some people may treat it, you know, it'll be silent, it's not going to have that foot traffic, it'll be responsibly one or two cars, whatever's permitted for the bylaw. But, you know, on the flip side of that coin is, is the negatives. So, you know, you've seen four or five cars parked there, maybe they don't spend the night, but they're there, you know, during the evening hours while people are trying to enjoy dinners. Perhaps, perhaps the, you know, just, just the general exterior of that 900 square foot building isn't aesthetically pleasing to the eye, but it is approved for the building inspectors and, you know, the code requirements and the bylaws for, for that. So you can take that and run with it, really, Kate.
Thank you.
Maria? Maria?
Yes.
Could you talk a little bit about the last one, that may not reach peak effectiveness without a housing? What does that mean?
So I don't know a ton about the housing need assessments. We've got another community planner working on a lot of those. But it really brings you back to the affordability issue, which happens on the next slide when I talked about paper versus reality. I was reading a 2019 diagnostic report a little bit about the zoning bylaw. I've kind of just been reading all these things that Teresa and Mike are like, oh, yeah, you should read this, or, you know, did you, did you read about that yet? I'm like, no, no, not yet. So I've been trying to get my paws on everything and it talks a lot about addressing our affordability issue and that's where the housing need assessment kind of overlaps.
Okay.
The affordability issue, if Mike, if people are ready to move on to slide number three, we can.
Before you move on, Sarah, I just wanted also, where you say may decrease property values of neighboring lots where ADUs are not permitted or permitted by special permit. I mean, I would think that they would also have the potential to decrease property values of neighboring lots just by virtue of, you know, what you described under neutral.
Yeah, it depends on, you know, who you're trying to attract and not in an inclusive way, but, you know, for that neighborhood specifically. And also, you know, as, as a younger individual, I would want to move into a neighborhood where there would be other, you know, younger individuals, perhaps with school age children, not so much the crowd that wants. And it's not, you know, not crowds that want parties or anything like that, it's just a different, it could be prescribed to be a different environment. But it doesn't have to be, that's not the case everywhere, so.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, slide number three. I was just losing us. Paper versus reality. So this is where I came up with these questions and really the only new or the edited piece of information on this slide for you guys from the American Planning Association is the difference in square feet. So it was 800, now it's 900. It's not a big difference at all. So I just list those questions mostly for you as community members and as community leaders to ask yourselves, because like I said, I don't live here, I'm new to the area. These are, these are questions you can answer truthfully and, you know, with your constituents. So, you know, you're looking potentially for young families with school age kids to help with the school decreasing population, perhaps young, great professionals who, you know, can't really afford to live in Stockbridge, so you live up near Fitzfield or North Adams or, I don't know, maybe Adams.
So Kara, do we know how many, I mean, there is wording in the, in the existing bylaw to, to this, you know, to this type of option, isn't there?
Which, which option are you?
ADUs. I mean, it's not called ADUs, but there is wording, is there not?
It's in the use table.
In the use table?
Table.
I mean, I guess what I'm getting at, what I'm getting at is, I know there are people renting properties in Stockbridge and do we have that data? Do we know, you know, how many, how many, currently how many ADUs or something similar to an ADU?
We, we can, we can work on getting that.
I think we should know.
Yeah.
Yeah. What we can do here is identify, as we talked about before, you know, if you want us to continue to pursue the ADU bylaw, we'll look at ways to address concerns that have come out of this meeting, plus concerns that we've identified to try to make as the best possible bylaw, if that's the direction the planning board wants to continue.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what the actual need is, you know?
That's a good question. Does anyone have any questions at least on 1A, B, or C?
Seems to me 1A, the answer is no.
Okay.
But B and C, maybe.
B and C are potentials.
That's my, my quick take on it.
One parking place is tough.
That can be, as they say. You know, the enforcement of the additional requirements that forthin' about the bylaw, building officials don't have permission to enter the residential property without warning, you know, we've discussed that. You know, this is where Mike brought up the idea of the owner signed affidavits. It can be difficult to rely on, you know, it is an affidavit, but if it happens once every, I don't even know, years, the assessor goes in and checks out the property, it may be tricky. The ownership requirements are difficult or sometimes impossible to prove, but I know Greg Barrington is going through some short-term rental discussions. So I've been keeping an eye on that because it's all overlapped. Oh, short-term rentals, the zoning, this, this new parcel zoning, it's very connected. So it's, you know, it's just language that I'm familiarizing myself with.
Can I come back to this, to 2A? Building officials don't have permission. If somebody's building a new house in Stockbridge or anywhere, under, and has a building permit, at what point does the building inspector last inspect that building? Doesn't he or she have to inspect it to issue a certificate of occupancy?
There's a certificate of occupancy, yes, and a certificate of completion, I believe.
So why couldn't we require the same thing for an ADU? That at completion, to issue a certificate of occupancy for the new ADU, the building inspector goes in and makes sure it's in compliance with code, but also if he spots a second kitchen or. but also, if he spots a second kitchen, or, you know, some other thing that we, we don't allow. I mean, what's, what's preventing us from imposing that kind of regime?
I don't think there's any.
That already, that would already happen, Bill. So they'd be building it and there'd be a building permit, the certificate and all that would happen. This is usually, when we talk about enforceability, is what happens afterwards. In communities that have said specifically, this is for, you know, just for the family to live there, how do you enforce, it's just a family there? And they're not letting, you know, whoever use it. They're not using it. And, you know, if they're not putting it out there on a site where you can see it for a bed and breakfast, and they're just on Airbnb, they might be just, by word of mouth, having somebody use it. You know, those are just little things that, once that certificate is issued, we just wanted the board to be aware that, once those certificates are issued, we don't have a lot of mechanisms for going and enforcing things.
What about if, requiring the owner-signed affidavit? And if it's, if it's subsequently proved to be inaccurate, we could impose a substantial financial penalty? Now, you know, it's the same problem. How do we prove that the affidavit is wrong? But if we do, if we do, we could, you know, penalize somebody for issuing an affidavit that is, is not accurate. And maybe the fact that there's a penalty would discourage some people from faking the affidavit and, and going ahead and building a kitchen or.
So we, we can look at, we can look into that. But we can put for enforcement. We've been examining that of, like I said, just how can we verify and enforce whatever the intent of this bylaw is? If we're just looking to allow people to place an accessory dwelling, you know, basically an addition, or, you know, the apartment above a garage and, and we don't care that much what it's being used for? Or how much are we want to enforce and what do we want to enforce? That's, that's the question. Once we determine those, that'll tell us what type of bylaw we're trying to create. And then how do we verify and how do we enforce?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Are we all set on this slide?
Does it create a tax liability if they increase their home by a bedroom or another bathroom or something? Does it increase the, increases the value of the home? So is there a way to track it that way through the assessor department? No?
They would get a copy of the building permit and what was done, and then we'd base it on that.
Only if they got a permit, then.
You know, otherwise, they could say, oh no, they just remodeled their kitchen and their bathroom.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Put a new roof, you know. There's a lot of advance of us.
I got you.
With that. So, this is where I'm looking for your two cents. And I did put a link, so when you do have this in the online version, if you click on that, you can, you can learn a little bit more about where I got these six bullet points on the bottom of the slide. Really, again, just looking for your input on, on these different bullet points. The available housing stock, entry level job growth, supportive local public policies, supportive neighborhoods, preservation goals, and aging demographics. So, where I put the Xs and the question marks and the check marks, Xs are, I don't think that that is currently happening in Stockbridge. Question marks are, I truly don't know. And the check marks where I think, you know, how we've been active in for things that are occurring in this town. So, please correct me where I'm wrong. Not if I'm wrong, but where I'm wrong in the Xs and the question marks and the checks.
It looks good.
Well, great, okay.
I mean, I would agree with those marks.
Okay.
I mean, you, you know, Kara, that there is a, an affordable housing trust fund that's been set up and a committee or commission that manages that process. And you talk about overlap. This, this is an issue that they would be interested in as well. So as we go forward, particularly the first X there, available housing stock, that's, that's what the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee is exactly is working on, is by definition. And the idea is to create more affordable and available housing stock. I think that's their, that's their goal. Is that a fair statement? Yeah. And it seems to me, that can be a goal of ADUs, but not exclusively, not the only goal. Because, as you, as you point out somewhere in there, people can downsize into a, you know, move from a big house into a little ADU and be happy because they're staying in Stockbridge amongst their friends and familiar surroundings. It's not so much a, an affordability issue necessarily, as it is, I don't want to live in a big house.
Right, maintenance.
With five bedrooms and, and huge heating bill and all that, yeah.
Kara, I would just say that I don't think we actually really know some of the answers here, given that our master plan dates from the 90s, I believe. So, I'm not sure. I think, in terms of supportive neighborhoods, while I know there is definitely support for affordable housing, I think there's, it's also balanced with other concerns in terms of costs, as well as impacts to character of the town.
Well, that is a question. I mean, she's got a question mark.
Okay. Any other points you want to raise, Kara, or Michael?
That's, that's that for the slides. And then in front of you, you also have the Table of Use Regulations.
Right.
With minor, mostly, well, not formatting, but minimal issues, or amendments, I should say, in.
And I think, I think I saw a question in the chat feature from Roxanne, asking, don't we already have a provision for ADUs or words to that effect? And that's where, this is where it is, I think, in the Table of Uses.
Yes. Yes. In the Table of Use Regulations, 4.11 in the original bylaws, number seven.
So Kara, one, a couple things I noticed in looking at the Table of Use Regulations. On, on the second page, 4.11, number three, assuming this is based on our existing, I'm just gonna make a correction there. It says public uses in the original bylaw. That's, that's actually public utilities. And, and then, I had a question. I noticed that you removed under number seven, and maybe there was one other place, that the, the existing bylaw makes use of cutoff dates. And I was curious as to why those were removed? If you could explain that to me.
Sure. I was just, I was just looking at what Phil did. And this is more of my personal gist on this, as far as.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. I was looking at what Phil did on this and just reading comments from, from him and Donna. I'm not sure.
Brewer. The lawyer.
Okay, you're comfortable. So, I was reading edits and stuff like that. And I was just putting more of, this is, this is more of my twist. And this is more of my take on, on the reading of the permitted uses. I don't, I personally don't see the, the dates as, you know, the most important item in the conversion of accessory dwelling unit. But they can obviously go back in if that's something the Planning Board is desirous of. And again, this is the draft.
And, and I would say that we're also, this would be replacing and removing those dates that said before 1991, you could, a structure existing you could add to, things like that. If we were to change and go to a new ADU bylaw, those would come out.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's important to, you know, to understand that, I mean, I guess, it seems that those dates have, had something to do with providing for incremental growth, so.
Right. And, and that would be a decision of just staying pat with what we have. If, if we're not changing the ADU, but if we're gonna put it in ADU bylaw, then you would be getting rid of the language that says only applies to structures before 1991.
Right.
So a couple decisions that the board would have to make now is, do you want us to continue with the development of the ADU bylaw? Do you want us to try to address those concerns that we brought up this evening? Do you want to stay put? This is one of those pivot points. Would you, how would you like us proceed? And, and how would you like Kara to focus her energies?
Comments from the board? Anybody feel strongly that we should drop this?
Who else from the board is in the room, Bill?
Everybody but you and Carl and Wayne.
So three are absent?
Yes. But we do have a quorum, so.
We do have a quorum, right. I, I guess, you know, my preference would be to, I have been studying this. I have been reviewing it. I'd be interested to hear what, what Carl and Wayne have to say as well.
I think in the interest of just seeing, seeing us, the work having started, good work and nice presentation, Kara and Mike. I, I agree with, with three people missing, that's unfortunate. But I don't think that's sufficient reason to keep from asking Kara and Mike to continue this work.
I'm not suggesting we not continue the work. I'm just suggesting that, you know, maybe we, if we could, you know, have a more, you know, have more discussion at the next meeting, so that.
Sure. Yeah. I think we're gonna have to have a lot more discussion as we go on. But I think the, the first question was from Mike, should they continue? And I think the answer is, they should. Does anybody agree with that?
Yes.
Everybody here? And I think the, the related question is, address concerns that have been raised? Yes, please. Do things like enforceability and, and other issues that we've talked about, that I know you've made notes of. Please do address the concerns and, and we'll look forward to having another session with you at a later date. Not necessarily two weeks from now, but, you know, yeah, in, maybe in March.
Kara, what's, what's the most efficient way? I mean, would it be helpful for you if, you know, for my, speaking for myself, if I just made a list of some of the questions I have and emailed those to you or to Mike? You know, what's, what's the most efficient way to do this?
I would say to Mike, I would say, without answering for him, I would say, you know.
I mean, I mean, some questions, you know, might just be, rather than taking up time on the airwaves, some questions might be really quickly answered. So I'm wondering if, Bill, you know, as chair, is that something you'd be comfortable with?
Yeah, as long as, at some future meeting, we.
Right. So in order to make sure we're not in any violation, if any board member has questions specific for the next time we're coming, please send them to my attention. I'll get them to Kara. And then we will come back with the answers to those questions.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah.
Good. Good.
And Mike, did you, did you want to do more of that pivot point? Bill, would you like us to continue on the Table of Use Regulations? Or would you like us to continue, in addition to finding those answers to those questions brought up tonight, would you like us to continue on the table and the bylaw? Or one or the other?
Well, I think the Table of Use will flow from the bylaw, right?
Yeah.
I mean, rather than vice versa. So I'd say, focus on the bylaw. And as we come to agreement on the bylaw, we'll make sure that the Table of Use comports with, with the bylaw.
That's right.
One minor administrative request I have, Kara, is if you could use our existing bylaw as the taking off point for your draft bylaw, so that it's, you know, the differences and changes are just really clear. This draft that you have here, you know, as I started studying it against the existing, it's different.
Yes, yeah. I did the fifth draft off of the fourth draft that was presented by Phil. So I can, I can start.
I'm sorry, I know that's, that's a little bit of work, but it shouldn't be too much.
No, 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 it's not, it's not, it's not at all. That's fine.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do we want to, thanks again for this, Kara. It's a good start, or good continuation. Do we want to talk about parking? Are you ready to, or?
I can.
Do you want to say what you're up to on parking?
Yeah, just briefly.
That's not on the agenda, is it?
Well, it was a discussion, the agenda says, is my agenda. To discuss work in town. It doesn't say ADUs. So let's talk about parking.
So what I have prepared tonight is, is minimal regarding parking. Mike, kind of my first day, brought this to my attention. And I thought of a few options with, with his guidance for off-street additional parking. For those of you who did not get one of these, would you like one? Because it's got the parking map.
Oh, yes.
So I, I've got two. Well, I can do three of them.
Thank you.
If you guys need to share.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And luckily, the printer was in color, so you can see the, and Kate, I'll describe them as well as I can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The first location that, that I consulted Mike on was the current tennis courts and basketball court on, is it Pine Street?
Pine Street.
So there's tennis courts and then a smaller basketball court with, I think, a tennis wall. So that, that's one potential idea. Nothing has been done, no steps have been taken. These are just larger parcels of land that I've, that I've seen, as you can see using Google Maps.
Are you thinking that would be parking? Is that what you're?
Yes.
But.
I want, I want to caveat this whole discussion. At this point, what we did was just examine any and all possible ideas, anything Kara could come up with looking at the downtown. This is it. We have taken it no further than just a broad concept term. So obviously, there'd be all types of questions as we move forward. But the first thing was just saying, okay, where's their land? Where's there's even a possibility of parking?
Okay.
And then we will move to the next phase, which would be, what is probable? What is actually possible? Right now, it was just pie in the sky, I think.
Okay, we'll listen.
Nothing is real. Nothing is real.
All right, we'll just listen.
And then, are there?
By the way, I'm sorry, this number one?
Yes.
It looks like it's south of the tennis courts.
It, it is either, well, the drawing is yes, south of the tennis courts. It could encompass that, that basketball court, as there is a basketball court just next to Town Hall.
Just next to?
There's one, there's a basketball court. Next door to the police department, so.
That's number three.
On the good one. No, I, I understand three, just number one, I think, is a little, is not quite positioned. If you're talking about taking over the basketball courts, that's north of the square.
Yes, it is.
Number one, okay.
And number two is the current parking lot of the Episcopal Church, just across the street from, you know, Kitty Corner to the Red Lion Inn, just behind the Lost Land. There is a dirt parking lot back there near the Child Daycare Center, which connects out to Pine Street through a little driveway. That is another potential option. And the third option, as you'll see on the map, is just next to Town Hall here on Land Street, where, behind the tennis courts, which.
Down the hill.
Yeah, slightly down the hill, where the basketball court is, and a little bit jing-jawed back there towards the Baseball Diamond. So again, like Mike said, these are just, these are just ideas that I came up with, with, you know.
And then there are examples in other communities of public-private partnerships, where, you know, you, you figure out what their need is and what our need is, and then is there a way to share the parking? How could Town Hall parking itself be maximized on the weekend to benefit the downtown? And then, you know, is dual tennis, tennis courts required or something else? So.
Mike, did you, I'm sorry, I might have missed it. But did you look at?
So, I hate to say it, I got the other referees coming in for halftime, so.
As many referees as we can get.
Yeah, so this, like I said, then, these are just biggest concepts possible. So we're going to narrow this down more, we're going to look at some other properties. There's the old Hall's garage, that's still in ownership of somebody else, but that's an area, and some others, so.
Did you look at that area where the tennis courts by the Town Hall are as well?
Yes, just behind the, the tennis courts, where the basketball court is here next to Town Hall.
You mentioned that already, right?
Yeah, that's actually number three that we came up with so far.
And I know Roxanne is talking about Park Street.
And Stockbridge Motors.
And the old Stockbridge Motors, both of which are pie in the sky, but should be on a list.
A sidewalk either, please.
I think one thing that I learned in talking to a planner, Kara, was that there's a certain distance beyond which people just won't walk.
Yeah.
Do you know what that distance is?
I don't, I don't remember it, I don't remember it, Marie, that was Nat Kearns.
Quarter of a mile or something, yeah.
Remember Nat Kearns from regional planning?
Yeah.
That was, that came from Nat.
Okay, yeah, I'll definitely ask about that.
It was, you know, it was, it was, I just don't remember. I'm not going to put a figure out because I don't remember the exact number of feet.
Yeah, but you're right, there is that, that number that people aren't thinking of, you know, as they're walking. But, you know, they get to one block further, and it's like, geez, this is really far. But yes, I'll look into that, Kate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or any other comments, Kara?
I don't have any else.
Anybody have questions of her? Mike, you have to go. Thank you for.
Thanks, Mike.
For zooming in.
Thanks Kara, nice job.
Thanks, everyone. If there's anything else you want, just reach out to me and we'll make sure to have it addressed for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Kara, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, nice meeting you.
Yeah.
When are you here, Kara?
Typically, we're Thursdays.
Thursdays.
Yes.
Okay. The last item is how to proceed with the Cottage Era State by law. I asked you last week to focus on what we've got, what's already in the bylaws, as opposed to Jeff Lacy's draft of revision. I think we should eventually take a look at Jeff's draft, because I, personally, I think there are a couple of things in there that could be incorporated in the existing by law. But my first question about this is, has it ever been used?
Yes, it has.
Yeah, but every time it's been used, it's been amended.
And what's the most recent use, if you can?
Elm Court.
Elm Court.
It's also, every time it's been used, it's, it's been amended, and it's been extraordinarily controversial.
Yeah, so when you mean it's been amended for Elm Court?
They, they made it so that Elm Court could do what Elm Court did.
They changed the, they basically allowed for a higher, they made it fifty feet, higher buildings, fifty feet. I mean, that's tied to certain things, but.
And, and, yeah.
They changed the, some of the wording, like they added in hotel and resort. And I think table of uses was changed as well, so.
And they, they making the changes was the select board at the time?
Yeah. So it's sort of, as I recall, Gary, you, you can sort of, you were, in some ways, I think you were on the scene earlier for these things. There were, the first, when the by law was first introduced, the first, the first amendments centered around making it possible for it to be run as a, as an inn, I believe. And then, and that was when Elm Court was within, was family owned. And I guess it's all partly family owned, but, you know, entirely family owned at that point. And then.
For the burly's.
Right, and then the next, the next change is sort of happened over small, you know, a, a period of time for the, the next owners.
Well, that's when the burly's wanted to sell it to who has it currently.
Trevasa.
Well, no, it was another name before that.
Yeah, I think that's right. So I'm looking at the by law now on page forty-seven at the bottom. One of the permitted uses is resort. And that, this definition of resort was not sufficient for Elm Court?
Well, that's, that represents that, one of their changes, adding an.
It's one of the new.
Yeah, that's one of the changes. I specifically remember one of their lawyers.
I see, so the earlier version of this by law didn't include that?
Right.
I, I get it, okay. And before Elm Court, is there an example of another use of this by law as amended? To your knowledge, Gary?
Trying to think, I don't think so.
So.
No, because they were exempt.
Who was, who was exempt?
Marion Fathers, for building height.
Well, Tangowood went over, they went to forty-five as a nonprofit, but subsequently, I learned that the nonprofits aren't necessarily exempt from our zoning bylaws, so.
But their school, right, or something?
Tangowood? Well, their educational activity goes on there, yeah.
Yeah, it could.
Or religious.
Uh, religious, yeah.
It's not religious, but it's.
No, Marion's is.
Was that? Yeah, okay. So it's been used once, in the memory of anybody?
This current version?
Yes.
Well. Once.
Once.
Yeah. It was tailored specifically.
For Elm Court.
For Elm Court.
But even before Elm Court, it's only, that's the only time it's been used? Even the old version?
No, it got changed for the burly's, I think, too.
Before?
Before, and then it wasn't good enough when they wanted to sell it to.
This other one, yeah.
The, the new folks.
But before Elm Court, was there anything?
You mean another property, Marie?
Yeah.
No.
They ever, no. Hmm, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So remind me what happened with the De Sisto property? They wanted to change a by law in some way, or was it just for zoning?
They definitely wanted to change the by laws.
Yeah.
How did they want to change it?
Well, they had two, they brought two by law change requests to the planning board. And the first one, the planning board heard along with a by law from the select board for the Cottage Era State to replace the existing. And honestly, you know, that was, that meeting is, was just very, very confusing. You know, trying, trying to evaluate two complicated by laws at the same meeting was quite something. And then the next subsequently, De Sisto brought another by law change in winter, in the winter of 2018. And that one, we have on record a very, an, an analysis of that by law by Ray Miaris. So if you want to see that, I'm sure that, that is available from either at the Town Hall or from, from Miaris.
Yes, great.
But, but what change did they want us to make?
Oh, it was a complete.
A completely new by law?
It was a, it didn't resemble anything like we had. It was a complete allowance of everything that they wanted to do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was pretty much a carte blanche to, to do what they wanted to do. And then it was open-ended such that they could keep on doing what, whatever they wanted to do.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to get off topic.
No.
No, that was important.
It's germane to the conversation.
It's relevant, yeah.
I mean, I think that, you know, I wish Wayne was here, and I, I think we should continue the conversation, because there are, you know, with respect to differing opinions. I think, you know, some people looked at the plans that they submitted and said, well, this looks just fine. But the, the thing was, is that when you looked at the plans, first of all, they weren't actual plans, they were just drawings. And, and then when you looked at the proposed by law, well, there was, you know, they didn't exactly add up. They left some, they certainly left some questions in my mind as to what their actual long-term plans were.
Okay. Well, I started this out by asking how often this by law had been used. We've, we've addressed that. Are there other topics in here, other elements of the by law that, as you've reviewed it,
I guess the other.
bother you or, or stick, stick out as problematic, or?
I guess the other kind of question is, how many properties in town does this affect? You know, we had a definition of what a Cottage Era was. It had to be built in a certain area, in a certain time, in the eighty acres. But do we know how many places in town?
I think there's only three. There's Elm Court, there's Marion Fathers, and it's still undecided whether De Sisto would fit the eighty acre piece, because we never got a definitive answer as to whether they really fit the by law or they don't.
Barb, what's the eighty acre? What, is it, there's not enough acreage there? What, I, I haven't heard this.
Remember, Kate, it was all about frontage, wasn't it?
Well, they were basically trying, yeah, they didn't, they didn't have.
Eighty acres?
No, they.
I don't think they had eighty acres.
Oh.
They have three hundred acres.
It was frontage then or some, it was, it was something, it was minimally short, but short, right? I think the front yard didn't fit the.
You know, if I may, Marie, you really kind of nailed it, and so what I.
I mean, how many are we affecting here? Is this worth?
I'd like to share my screen, because between Bill's comment and your comment, Marie, I want to pull up, if I may, the Cottage Era State definition. So can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so you see, this is, to me, this is interesting, because if you look at that, a single lot in the R four or R two districts, consisting of no less than eighty contiguous acres, having a principal one-family dwelling dating from America's Gilded Age of approximately eighteen seventy to nineteen twenty. So it's not a very specific definition. And one of the threads of conversation that came up was that, you know, there are a number of properties around town that have sort of these, you know, that could potentially meet this, this definition. It's sort of vague. And then the other thing is, look at South May. You know, that's an R one, so.
It's an R one?
Yes, it is. It's an R one district.
How much property do they have?
Oh my gosh.
It's large.
Lots.
Couple of hundred acres? Worth of eighty?
It was divided.
Yeah, the Gulf Corso is part of it.
Oh, and, and the Glen Dale Middle Road? Yeah, they've already divided that.
Yes, it has been divided, that's true, it's been sold.
What, what size?
They couldn't put it back together again, they certainly could, but.
Two different people own it.
Oh, do they now?
What size, what size is it now, Gary?
I don't know, Jen just said that two different people own it now, two parcels.
I think it's still a chunk of change, though.
Yeah, it's still big.
It's the most expensive house in the county.
Six point something?
Oh, more than that, I think.
It gets sold in 2018 for six point, six point two, maybe?
And since 2018, we've had a pandemic which has skyrocketed housing values.
Right, right.
It's probably worth twenty-five percent more, if not, if not that. So it is an interesting question, how many properties would fall under this definition? And, and thus, I mean, even, even if it's only one, or two, or, or max three, apparently, if, if South May doesn't count, do we need a special by law to address?
We need to think about.
Right.
Free property.
Well, I think, you know, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the crux of it, is where does this apply?
Yeah.
And they could just request a special permit, right?
Yeah, under, yeah, if, if the Cottage Era State by law didn't exist, they could do what they wanted under a special order that it could apply.
Which I still maintain would be our best move, which would be to, to strike the Cottage Era State by law from the bylaws.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I, frankly, it's, it's just been so controversial and polarizing. I don't see, I don't see that as good for our community. I would prefer to, you know, if you look at our, maybe, before we get together again to talk about this, would be worth reviewing our subdivision by law, because there's more flexibility built into that than you might think.
More flexibility for us to.
Well.
Make decisions, is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
So Marie, I haven't actually gone through subdivision, but Gary has. And I know, for example, with the Stone Ridge development, you know, they, there was some, some flexibility. Gary, can you speak to it maybe, in terms of?
I don't really, I don't remember as well as I should, I guess. But I, I know that there was some negotiations.
There was some.
And you do have some abilities. I mean, one of the things we did was, you know, instead of having seven driveways, we, we made a longer access point with a cul-de-sac so that you could get all the houses in a, at least the ones in Stockbridge, could be accessed off of that one road. So instead of having seven can. So instead of having seven canyons cut into the, the side of the Dougway Road, you know, we opted for a longer and a, probably a little bit wider driveway. I think it ended up actually being a little bit narrower, because the, the fire department and police department felt that that wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
So there was that.
It was also a perme, it's a permeable surface, so.
Yeah.
You know, that.
And the other thing is, I mean, the owner or the developer really wanted to have the, have his, have envelopes, so that's one of the things I think that Jeff talked about too, was, I mean, before, I mean, it had more to do with him than to us, but, you know, if the houses are in envelopes, and, and once they're built, you'll never see them.
I mean, and frankly, when we went.
Because they have to maintain a bound, you know, a, a space, you know? Just like what was talked about, I think, at one point with, with De Sisto, was, you know, having, if you will, an envelope where you couldn't, you know, see it from the, from the highway or from neighboring residences, you know? But.
Yeah. Okay. Well, those are all good questions. Should we delete it? Do we need it? Because so few properties would fall under it? Does the subdivision bylaw suffice?
I mean, one of the arguments is, is that just because you have that, then you have more rights than, than you do or I do, to, to do something with your property. Granted, it's a, it's a huge swath of land, but the, the person that owns or falls within that category has more rights to do things with their property, and, and many times, it seems to be, you know, the unintended consequences that happen, where you're trying to protect something and then you end up with something that's decidedly different than you had hoped for.
Right, right.
Yeah, I will say, Bill, that when we were reviewing the zoning, with the zoning review committee, I did talk to Ray Mieres about the Cottage Era State bylaw, and what he told me was that when Stockbridge was introducing its zoning bylaw in the nineteen nineties, I think, thereabouts, end of the eighties, Ray Mieres was just being brought on, onboard as town council at that time, and he warned the, he warned the select board, he said, you're gonna, you're going to have problems with this bylaw. And he felt that, you know, that bylaw needed, was, had it, you know, had issues, and he warned them, but I guess he was told, it's too late, it's already in the works, and we're not, we're not taking it out.
Interesting. Marie?
If we decided that we didn't want the Cottage Era bylaw, is that a town meeting vote? It would. If we had, if we changed it, it's like a change in our zoning.
Yep.
So that would go to town meeting and, okay.
Yeah. And, and obviously, we'd have to explain, you know, we'd have to have a clear rationale to get support for it. Okay.
Well.
Those are good questions, we need to ponder. Let's look at the subdivision bylaw next meeting, and.
Yeah, that may be where we need to, to think about.
Yeah. Any other comments for tonight's meeting on this or any other business?
I think the only, I'd like to say is just that the folks that are going to be going into the old Southern Arts place, it was very nice to see a, a sign that seemed to be appropriate for what they were doing, and it, it fits nicely with, with what's already there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. And it fit the bylaw, you know?
The bylaw, and that's music in my ears. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Oh, wait, I think Nancy had something.
Did you have something?
Had something quick. Bill had asked me at our last meeting for me to, if I had something to say about going to the Berkshire Regional Planning meeting?
Yes, please.
So I just wanted to say, I attended both the executive board and one of our Berkshire delegates meetings in January. One item I wanted to share is a discussion about the Community One Stop for Growth Portal. It concerns housing development. Lots of discussion about this, under, is an underutilized program for pre-development of housing in towns. Berkshire Regional Planning offers direct technical assistance, help getting grants, creating master plans, and they also triage with towns and the state for community needs. Many towns have taken advantage of this program's help.
Can you share that with Jay Baikovsky, please?
Yep.
The chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah, we had a meeting last week, and, and I'm on it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Does he know about this? I'd forgotten you were on it.
I'm, I'm sure he does, yeah, but when we had our meeting, we had already decided on the, Mike Canalis brought a presentation that we've approved, we've talked it over, and we've approved it for affordable housing, and now it's gone over to the attorney.
Oh.
And then it comes back to us for tweaking, and if the committee agrees, everything looks good, we'll give it to the selectmen, they'll vote on it, and they will pick their new people.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you're way ahead of me, way ahead of me. So there's a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. Kara, again, thank you for coming.
Kara, thank you very much.
Very nice work.